This meeting of Essex County Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak and to be in compliance with the Governor's executive order, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view the meeting via live stream on YouTube. A link for the live stream is posted on the Commissioner's website. To all participants in this meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on the record each time before you speak. The general public will be able to participate by means of communication equipment. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Luciano? Absent. Commissioner Ricardo?
Here.
Commissioner Sebel?
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Here. We will omit the salute to the flag since we are conducting this meeting remotely. However, for all of those affected and/or to lost to COVID-19 virus, let us pause for a moment of silence to honor the 2,439 people in Essex County lost to the virus. Thank you. I have before me certification from the Clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Mr. President, there are none.
Madam Clerk, we will now move to topics of discussion. Madam Clerk, are there any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
Okay, Madam Clerk. Let's move to public comment. Today's meeting is a combined conference board meeting and will be, we will vote on every item on the agenda. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration. You can also call in. At this portion of the meeting, the Clerk will have additional instruction for our callers. Madam Clerk.
Constituents were given the opportunity to call in or send emails for public comment prior to the meeting. If you are calling in, you will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our Public Information Officer will announce the callers so they can state their comment or question and be reminded you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we are accepting only calls pertaining to agenda items. Please note, you will have an opportunity to call back later in the meeting at the designated time for public comment session on non-agenda items. Charlo Malumba, Public Information Officer, will begin our public comment session now.
Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners, we do not have any callers at this time.
Also, Mr. President, we do not have any emails regarding agenda items for public comment. Also, Mr. President, I'd like to bring to your attention that I see that Commissioner Gill has joined the meeting.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, we do have a caller. We have one caller who just called.
Okay.
Okay, the caller is Whitney Strube. Mr. Strube, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Sure. Hello, Freeholder or Commissioners, I'm sorry. My name is Whitney Strube. I live in Newark, New Jersey, and I'm with the North Jersey DSA, the Democratic Socialists of America. I'm sure you can predict where this call is headed. I'm calling about the county budget on the agenda, which again extends your collaboration with ICE into the Biden era where we have seen too many deportations already taking place. And we know that your collaboration with ICE facilitates that. We know that it keeps the detention and deportation apparatus alive. So I call to object to that yet again, but I also call with some questions. Last time I had mentioned this, I mentioned the $38 million on the budget for so-called federal inmates. And I suggested that that was ICE money. I got a little pushback from somebody in the Budget Office there saying that it was not exclusively ICE money, but I don't see a breakdown. And I'd like to know, for the record, of that projected $38 million, how much of that is coming from ICE versus US Marshals? I think that would be relevant information. I'm sure the vast majority of it is in fact from ICE. And secondly, I have another question for the record, which is about Essex County's collaboration with ICE. We know from the Attorney General, his own report in November, which showed us that Essex County is collaborating with ICE more than any other county in New Jersey in terms of providing information, making people available to ICE. And so we've known that since about November. And I'd like to know what has been done about that since then? And specifically, what have the Commissioners and what has the Executive done? Are there plans to take measures to curtail that collaboration? Or is that simply now an accepted part of this collaboration with ICE that Essex County will be New Jersey's flagship county for ICE collaboration? So I would like clarification on that as far as what you have done and/or plan to do about this knowledge that we now have. And again, the contract with ICE is immoral and it does the work of the racist detention machine. And I hope someday you find it within yourselves to stand up to Joe D. and the Corrections Union and end this contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strube. And Madam Clerk, please ensure that this information is relayed to the administration for an appropriate response. Thank you.
Will do, Mr. President.
So let's move to ordinances or resolutions on introduction and first reading. Do we have any ordinances or resolution for instructions and first reading, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, we have, we have one. And that is ordinance establishing New Jersey County Option Hospital Fee Pilot Program for the County of Essex.
Okay, we'll read it into the record on a later date. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. Mr. Del Guardio is here to explain this one along with a representative from Myers and Stauffer, Ms. Margaret King. Mr. Del Guardio.
Hello. Good evening, Commissioners. Frank Del Guardio, Director, Department of Health and Rehabilitation. This ordinance, named the County Option Hospital Fee Pilot Program, was an act that was put through the New Jersey Legislature back in 2018. It has seven participating counties in the state of New Jersey. It's the first program of this type being introduced through legislation. So what this program basically does is, the county comes up with a plan working with the hospitals in Essex County, which we do have the most hospitals in the state of New Jersey in this county. The program then is designed based on Medicaid discharges. And then what happens is, for all of the hospitals, the calculations are made. They're submitted to the state for approval of the plan, shared the information with all of the hospitals. And then what happens is, the county needs to assess a fee in order to submit this program, submit these funds to the federal government. So the way this works, the CMS allows Medicaid programs to use funding mechanisms like this, fee program, to collect state share dollars that they then match with federal dollars. Okay, so they match these dollars collected by the fee in the same way the fund, they fund the entire Medicare program. There's a lot of state fees involved. There's always matching requirements from the state. So what this program then does, it sends more money in order to reimburse the Medicaid program. And then those monies are then returned to the hospitals through the five managed care organizations in the state of New Jersey. I mean, that's it in a nutshell. It's a very complicated formula in how all this was calculated. But we're asking for approval to assess the fee on the hospitals, to collect these funds, and then to transfer to the state of New Jersey, and then to the federal government for distribution back to the hospitals. Now, the purpose of this program is threefold. It brings more money back into the state of New Jersey and dispersment to the hospitals for their Medicaid payments. So the Medicaid payments are pretty much the lowest payments these hospitals receive. So what it does, it tries to bring up the equity for those, the low-income residents that do have Medicaid. And it provides incentive to equal the playing field as far as services go, which is a real important feature of this program. Secondly, the hospitals are then given their funding what they feel is a fair share for a Medicaid claim. Then money is also allocated to the county in order to administer this program. So I mean, with this, I know there's a lot of talk all the time that we need to do more in bringing money back into the state and the county. And that's what this bill permits. And the Medicaid program also permits this. So this is the first step in getting this ordinance for your consideration. And we will provide updates moving through this program, which is set to kick off on July 1st of 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Del Guardio. Mr. Paul Abecio, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions on that, Mr. President.
Mr. Mackinac?
Yes, Mr. President and members of the board, I did receive from Mr. Del Guardio literature and schedules with regard to this program. And in addition, it spoke with Mr. Del Guardio in reviewing the schedules. So I'm going to give you my version of this, how this plays out. It basically, and I'm going to ask you a question first. Frank, just to establish, the amount of additional Medicaid, according to the schedule here, above and beyond what the hospitals will pay, or I should say, the total amount that they'll receive is listed as $181 million, correct?
All right, so you, Mr. President, that's correct.
Okay. It's 181, 581. So that is above and beyond the normal Medicaid that the hospitals would have received during the course of a year?
Well, what happens with this, and I'll turn this over to Margaret King. But what this is, there's programs like this all over the country. Several different fee programs, and they're structured differently throughout the states. And most of these are administered through the states. But this requires a, you know, money coming from the state in order to initiate these increased payments on the Medicaid side. So I could turn that over to Ms. King to comment.
All right, just so you understand the question, I'm assuming that the $181 million is above and beyond the norm, these are additional Medicaid, these are the incentive for the hospitals to take Medicaid patients? Because traditionally, those fees are very low and hospitals are reluctant to do so.
Yeah, and to you, Mr. President, that's 100% correct. So what, you know, the table that showed the hospitals that had more Medicaid discharges benefit more from this program. Those that did not have as many Medicaid discharges... Those that did not have as many Medicaid discharges, the payments are not as high. It's, you know, it's a common sense fiscal approach to it on how the whole program is calculated.
Right. So again, the question is, is the $181 million in addition to the normal flow of Medicaid funds at each one of these hospitals?
Well, I'm going to turn that over for a more detailed explanation by Ms. King.
Hi, good evening. The answer to that question is yes. These are additional dollars, over and above the normal Medicaid payment.
Okay. And so, secondly, looking at the formula here, the hospital, there's a formula which is 2.5% of the patient, the net patient revenue. I guess this is on a this is the 2019 model year, so this is on an aggregate amount, which comes to $81,177,000. That money is allocated to each one of the hospitals. For instance, Norbert Israel Medical Center has got to come up with $16,937,000. They have to write a check for that, correct, and give that over to the state or to the federal government? I'm just using them as an example.
Yes, that is correct. They would pay that in quarterly installments. So the very first payment would be 1/4 of that amount. Then they would receive the first Medicaid payment back, which then they could potentially use to fund the remainder of the fee.
Okay, but those funds, which in this case, for, again, for Norbert Israel would be 50, almost $57 million. So that, the differential between what they pay and what the estimated amount of additional Medicaid that hospital received is what, $39 million, almost $40 million, correct?
Correct.
All right, so they lay out the 16 on a quarterly basis with the expectation that above and beyond the normal Medicaid, they're going to receive quarterly for the period of '07, '01, 2020 to '06, '02, they are going to be close to $40 million. Additional money.
Yes, that's correct.
So they'll receive 56, 57 million, and the difference between what they paid and what they receive is 40 million. Now, in addition to that, can you just explain a little bit of the role that the county plays in this? Because in one of these schedules here, it shows that the county will receive during that same period of time, the state fiscal year, nearly $7.4 million in administrative fees.
Yes, the state set this up so that it's a county program. This is fairly innovative in that most of the Medicaid funding programs like this are state-run, and there are a couple of other local programs, but this one that's county-run is fairly innovative, and, which is good. And what that means is the county will then, will be involved by collecting the funds, and the state legislation allows the county to keep 9% of the proceeds of the tax, which for this coming fiscal year will be $7.3 million. The remainder is what is used to make payments to the hospitals.
Right. Okay, so, and this only flows to the county. From what I understand, goes from the county to the state, to the federal government, to the managed care providers, and then to the hospitals. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is Frank Del Guardio. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Now, on the $7.3 million, does the county have the staff, or has it taken that into consideration? Who will be doing the work in order to, you know, process all these claims?
Well, to you, Mr. President, what happened was our RFP for services from our accounting firm, Myers and Stauffer, include the billing and that administrative work to carry out this initiative.
So they'll be basically in charge. It won't have too much of an impact on county resources?
Well, right, I mean, at this point in time, there is another, there's a governmental transfer agreement that we will be bringing before the board, hopefully by the next meeting, that covers all of that, what components and what we're responsible for. And, you know, it's all done via electronic wire transfer.
Okay. And that accounting firm that's going to be doing with that contract was already picked, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that was the one for $131,000?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So obviously, that 0.3 versus 131 is not too bad, as far as I'm concerned. So, all right, so, you know, I guess, Mr. President, you can open up to the board, but I think that gives you a rough idea of, you know, the flow of funds, and that these are additional Medicaid monies, you know, above and beyond what they normally would receive. They have to pay up, they have to pay quarterly a set amount that was created by formula. And in return, they will get a significant, I guess, return on their investment is the best way to look at. Those additional Medicaid funds, which overall, for all the hospitals in Essex County, will be over $100 million. The difference between the $181 million that they're going to receive, or estimated to receive, versus the $81 million they have to pay quarterly. So, Mr. President, that's my spiel on this.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Thank you for that explanation. Commissioner, any questions? Commissioner Sebel.
Thank you. Frank, do you have any problems with it at all? Is it all okay?
Can you put it in a glass?
Well, that's, that's kind of a loaded question, Commissioner, right? I mean, I don't have any problems with what I'm seeing, and the explanations that were given to me by Mr. Del Guardio are clear, and and I think there's still issues that the county's working out, you know, themselves to make sure that this is expedited and it's a successful program. But these things do happen in other counties and even in other states. The county, Essex County has not availed itself of it in the past. So it's not like this is a brand-new thing. This is definitely something that has happened elsewhere in New Jersey as well as in the country. So you know, I think the hospitals understand this better than anybody because they're the ones that are being asked to come up with $81 million. And if they didn't think that this was going to be a successful effort, after their due diligence, I would assume that it would have happened. In addition, Mr. Del Guardio indicated that there are weekly meetings on this that are taking place, which I will, you know, now include myself. He was nice enough to include me on the, on those schedules and keep the board abreast. But yeah, I think that, I mean, from what I see, it's kind of a win for the county. The only concern that I, you know, would say is any liability that the county has, or any shortage of this cash flow. If none of that impacts on the county, and according to Mr. Del Guardio, it does not, then, you know, this looks like a decent program. It looks like a very good program.
So other places have been using it, but there hasn't been a problem?
I don't, I can't answer that question.
But Mr. Del Guardio is okay with this?
Again, to you, Mr. President, Frank Del Guardio. I think putting all the work in and all the checks and balances and, you know, all the effort putting in to protect the county, I see that this is a windfall for our hospitals, especially those, you know, the urban setting, and that's the design of the program. These programs have been very successful in other states. And it's just another example of how the state of New Jersey and Essex County has been losing out on these federal dollars that are available. This is just a mechanism to bring the money back into the county and to our hospitals.
Thank you. If that's the case, then I feel comfortable with it. Thank you, and thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Sebel. Any other comments? I think Commissioner Luciano has joined us.
Yeah, Mr. President, I have a question for Frank.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner.
What other counties are implementing this type of program?
Yeah, to you, Mr. President, Frank Del Guardio. This fee pilot program was granted to only seven counties in New Jersey, and they're deemed the urban county. So it's Atlantic, Camden, Essex, Hudson, Mercer, Middlesex, and Passaic.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk. Oh, I have a, I apologize, I jumped ahead. I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Luciano to introduce ordinance number one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson. You're on mute. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, I'm not on mute.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing purposes on?
Mr. President, we have two. Resolution number R22021-00159 and resolution number R-21, 2021-00160.
Madam Clerk, can you list resolutions, number R2021-00159 and 00160 for public hearing at our March 24th meeting?
Will do, Mr. President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions on second reading in public hearing this afternoon?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number one, which is from the Division of Community Health Services, and read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Eileen Fishman is here to address this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Presidents, Commissioners, President Richardson. I'm Eileen Fishman, Director of Community Health, Division of Community Health Services. This is a grant that we have yearly that the Essex County Municipal Alliance, these are for contracts, and it's for $204,000, 204,000, and 285, $204,285, excuse me. And it's, for each alliance gets a prescribed amount of dollars based on the formula that's given to us by the state. And for that, they use these funds for the purposes of prevention and education for vaping, marijuana, alcohol, and substance use disorder. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Fishman. Mr. Paul Vecchio.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Fishman, I'm looking at the data sheet that was provided with all the county alliances. Does this cover all municipalities except for Newark?
For Newark and Essex Fells. Newark, and each one chooses not to participate in the program. It covers 20 municipalities, one of which is a consortium of two, that's Caldwell West Caldwell.
Okay, and the others, and the two that you mentioned just affirmatively opt out of it?
Yes, they, we have been attempting to work with Newark, we have actually not attempting. We have worked closely with Newark over time. I have been in the division for 10 years now, and it was around the time I came that Newark decided not to avail themselves of the program. And each year thereafter, we attempt to discuss with Newark. We've been now through, I think, it's two administrations at least. We were quite close about two years ago. There was a woman in the Health Department who was a health educator who was going to be the coordinator, and she was very willing and interested in working on the program. We worked very well with her. We trained her, we sent her to training, and she moved on to a different position in her life and new job. And when she left, everything fell apart, and even though our coordinator, Elizabeth Marks, has had constant conversation with them in Newark about it, they choose not to participate. Essex Fells chooses also not to participate. They do not want to comply with the programming that's required for, in order to have the funding. And in their case, since they're a small town, the percentage of funding is quite low. So for them, they want to do the programs they choose to do when they choose to do them.
Thanks, Eileen. I appreciate that.
Don't worry. I have a question.
Wait, hold on. Mr. McInerney.
I don't have any questions, Mr. President.
Okay, Commissioners. Mr. Sebel.
I have a question. Eileen, how is it determined how much a municipality receives? I have the list in front of me, how much each gets.
It's done, yeah, it's done via formula that's given to us by the state.
And that's how you determine?
Yeah, we don't determine it. It's based on the funding they give us, and, which has been drastically cut because of COVID. And the monies for us come, in this particular case, come from the Dieter Fund, and those have been reduced drastically. And so they're not getting the funding, Jakarta is not getting the funding, the monies from Dieter to disseminate to the counties for this program at the same level as it was in the past. And so, go ahead.
So the state is determining how much each town gets?
Yes, absolutely. We do not have the ability to do that. They give us a formula, and based on that formula, that's how we end up with the money.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any other questions? Yes, it's very disappointing that Newark chose not to participate. I remember having this conversation, and I thought they had opted back in. I thought you guys had actually done it. But it's disappointing hearing now that it kind of fell apart. However, we got to keep moving on. Thank you for that. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham, and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You are welcome. Okay, Madam Clerk, we will now move to resolution number two, and it is from the Division of Housing and Community Development. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Ms. Lombardi will address this item.
Good evening. Craig Lombardi, Division of Housing and Community Development. As the resolution reads, "We are requesting that the Board amend the Emergency Solutions Grant Agreement with the Salvation Army of Montclair in order to fund emergency shelter operation activities in the amount of $20,000." "We are requesting this contract amendment because we originally intended to fund shelter operations, but mistakenly published the award as a homeless prevention activity. In order to correct this error, we have reissued a public notice, and we require approval from the Board of Commissioners to authorize the correction." Do you have any questions?
Mr. Paul Vecchio, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney.
All right. No questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner McConnell. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
You're muted, Commissioner.
Commissioner Johnson.
He just gave a thumbs up.
Okay. Yes. Commissioner Johnson, be a thumbs up. Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo.
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number three, which is from the Board of Elections. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, I'll be handling this one. This is from the Board of Elections. "As a contract with Reliance Graphics, Inc., to provide primary services for the Board, election materials for 2021 and 2022, and the amount of the contract did not exceed $97,190. This was a publicly advertised fair and open RFP. Two responses were received. And this company will provide primary, general, and school board election books, and the funding will be from operating funds. They do ballots. They do instructional materials for citizens to provide for written material. And again, there were two responses, and Reliance was the most highly graded respondent."
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Ms. Paul Vecchio, any questions?
No, no questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none, I have a motion from Commissioner Vice President Pumares and a second from Commissioner Siebel. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions four through six, which are from the Division of Youth Services, and read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Mr. Martinez will address items four through six.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jason Martinez. I'm the Administrator for the Youth Services Commission. Today, we are requesting approval for the telephone notification from the Superior Court of New Jersey Family Division for the amount of $16,922. A brief description in regards to this position. The telephone notification makes telephone calls daily to remind juveniles and parents and guardians of their next court date prior to their hearing. Also, the telephone notification, it reduces the need for the bench warrant to be issued due to the juvenile's failure to appear in court and to be placed in detention. One of the main roles for this part-time position. Any questions in regards to... To the telephone notification?
Any questions? A quick question on this. I see we are contracting with the Superior Court on this. Did we used to use an outside vendor to provide this service? In fact, I remember a young lady might have started here. Maybe a college project.
That is... For the telephone notification, yes. There was a young lady, and she had got a promotion. Well, not a promotion. She ended up getting a job within the courts. So she had moved on. We have a different young lady who is working there now for a part-time job.
And this contract is directly with the Superior Court, right?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Vecchio. Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Gill to take resolutions four through six as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, before you jump into that, I don't think he's explained five and six yet. That was just some work.
Yeah. You're 100% right. And go slow down.
I think it's actually four and six need to be done.
Yeah. I apologize for that. That was just one of the... That was just the telephone notification. The next one is for... Is for... Sorry about that. So the Division of the Youth Services is requesting approval in 20 contracts to provide services in dispositional options, diversion, delinquency prevention, reentry, and also detention alternatives. I have today with me is former Espira, Carlos Valentini. He's the Executive Director for Espira. And one of the programs that we're providing funding is for the Evening Reporting Center. And if he's on, he'll be able to speak about this.
Excuse me, Mr. President, for clarity. So the resolution that was discussed was Resolution Five, and are we now, through you, Mr. President, discussing Resolution Four?
I believe that's correct. Is that correct, Mr. Martinez?
That's number six.
That's number six. I skipped over five. Apologize.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, Mr. President, let me just pause for a second. So I think what happened is we started at number five.
Right. And I should have given them... Yes.
Okay. So we have not done four or six. So can we just clarify for the record? Are we doing... We did five. We are now doing six. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President.
So if Carlos Valentini is on, he'll be able to speak a little about the Detention Alternative Program that he has.
Good evening, Commissioners. I don't know if I'm muted or not.
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Good evening. Supreme Commissioners in Essex County Family. My name is Carlos Valentini from the Spear of New Jersey with regards to the Evening Reporting Center. Pretty much, it's an option where we run the program for a number of years. I'm sure some of you have been familiar with it. Obviously, during COVID, if you don't mind, I'd like to tell you some of the changes we made to address the COVID situation with this. But we've had the students, we pick them up, no more than four per van. We observe all social distancing protocols. Their temperatures are taken actually before they board the van to avoid, you know, obviously spreading the virus. When they're in the facilities, they're socially distanced. We also stagger their schedules. We have no more than five to eight daily, and we alternate the schedules every other day. And we've been doing this for the last couple of months. Hopefully, as things get better, we'll be able to return to normal with it. But we've been able to still provide services to all of them. When they're not in the facility physically, we're providing services remotely. Our counselors are calling them. We're engaging them in different activities over the phone. We're spending time doing some counseling with them, and we're pretty much in contact with them for most of the time that they would be.
Thank you, Mr. Valentini.
Thank you.
Ms. Paul Vecchio.
I don't have any questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? For resolution number six. Hearing none, let's go back to number four.
Yes. I apologize for that, Commissioners. So yes, last one is the Division of Youth Services is requesting approval for $100,238 to provide funding for the Superior Court Family Division, the Substance Abuse Evaluator. Today, I have... Tonight, I have Bob Viscotti, who holds that position, and he'll be able to elaborate a little more in regards to the Substance Abuse Evaluator.
Good afternoon, all. I just want to let you know that I'm honored to be here tonight, and I want to thank Jason for inviting me to speak. I almost thought I was going to get away with not having to speak for a second there. So again, my name is Rob Viscotti, and I'm a task evaluator for the Essex Superior Court Family Division. We conduct substance abuse evaluations and make recommendations for the judges. There are currently seven evaluators working in Essex. We have more evaluators in Essex than any vicinity in the state due to the large nature of Essex County. There are three in criminal, two in probation, and two in the family division, one of them being me. We... And primarily, we deal with juveniles in the family division. And so how we conduct our... The tools we use to conduct our evaluation is the ASI, Addiction Severity Index. We use the DSM-V, and we go by ASAM criteria. So the DSM-V is the Diagnostic Statistical Manual. And if a juvenile meets criteria for a substance use disorder, then we refer to the ASAM, the American Society of Addictive Medicine, and we use that to, you know, determine a level of care. So what I'm talking about is if a young man or young woman meets criteria for a substance use disorder, they come in three categories, like say cannabis. So they might meet criteria for cannabis use disorder. So it'll be either mild, moderate, and severe. And determining on the severity is what we refer them to, you know, what level of care, which is a program. So... And I mentioned that I'm a task evaluator, and TASTAN for Treatment Assessment Services for the Courts. So we basically provide a service for the judges, like alternative sentencing. And if it's determined that they have a substance use issue, we can refer them to a program. We work closely with the CMOs. Everything we do is court-ordered. So before we can evaluate a young man or a young woman, they have to be... We have to get a court order from the judge. Where we get our referrals are... We get them from several different docket types, but primarily FJ is juvenile... The juvenile... We get the juveniles. Then CIC is Children in Court. And so we also get referrals from probation and JISP. And then every now and then, the judges call us, and we do what is known as ISC. It's Intake Service Conference. And basically, it's a counseling session with the kid where, you know, the judge will call us. They'll get referred to us. And we do, you know, a brief session. Typically, now over the phone, usually would be in person. But, you know, due to the challenges that we've all been facing over the last year, we've been working over the phone and working pretty efficiently, I might add. So that's basically task in a nutshell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viscotti. Again, Mr. Paul Vecchio, any questions?
No, sir. No questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Mr. President, I have one.
Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. I know the representative who just spoke to us mentioned there are two of his positions. Is this funding for both, or is this just for one?
This is for one, for the evaluation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Hearing none, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Gill to take resolutions four through six as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Absent. Okay. Commissioner Gill is, yes? Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo.
Yes, for number four and five, and no vote... Not voting for number six.
Okay. Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioners. Be safe.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions seven through nine, which are from the Department of Parks, and read them into the record at a later time. Let's read them in the order that they appear. Mr. Jackson.
Yes. I would apologize for that, Mr. President. Mr. Zaitz will handle items seven through nine in that order.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. Starting with number seven, this is a contract award to First Direct Products for the purchase and delivery of swan paddle boats in an amount not to exceed $169,376.10. Specifically, this is a contract where we can purchase up to 30 swan boats. The cost for each swan boat is $5,645.11. As it stands now, we anticipate purchasing 16 to 20 boats, but we opted to go with 30 boats just in case some issues with some of the current boats arise. Number eight is a bit of housekeeping. It's a resolution with the Department of Environmental Protection for the Green Acres Program. Back in March of last year, the Board approved an enabling resolution for Green Acres in the amount of 1.5 million for the Hendrix Field Improvement Project. Since that time, Green Acres has upped their grant amount to 2 million. So this is a... So this is a resolution adjusting that amount to now reach 2 million. And then Resolution Number Nine is a change order with Kevin Downs Tree Service to provide removal trimming and stump grinding services. This is an extra $100,000. The original contract was $500,000. This is an additional 20%, bringing the total contract up to $600,000. Currently, we are going through all the trees throughout the park system and addressing safety concerns throughout. And this contract ends in October of this year, and we're optimistic that the extra $100,000 will see the contract through its expiration date. Happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Mr. Zaitz. Mr. Paulalvecchio.
Yes, Mr. Zaitz, on Number Nine, was there any specific event or something that necessitated a 20% increase on this? Like, for instance, were more trees or limbs down because of weather or snow or something that wasn't anticipated when the contract was originally awarded?
Joshua Zaitz, through you, Mr. President. That is partially true. We did have the tropical storm, I believe it was last summer, that just did a number on our park system, be it branches, limbs, downed trees. So that's a big part of it. And then the other thing is, you know, we're just addressing safety concerns. As you know, we have the oldest park system in the entire U.S. It turned 125 last year. So these are, as you can imagine, older trees, which we're in the process of dealing with.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioner Siebel.
Josh, are the swan boats for the reservoir only?
Through you, Mr. President. Commissioner Siebel, that is correct. It's only for the reservoir. We only provide paddle boats in the reservoir. If the Board sees additional boats throughout the park system, those are provided by private vendors who have a contract with the county.
Are there paddle boats at other parks, at other lakes?
Verona Park, the boathouse over there, yeah, is a concession. Those are owned and operated by the vendor over there.
Okay, I understand. That was really my question. Thanks.
That's a good question, Commissioner. Let me ask you a question, Mr. Zaitz. So where else in the park systems are swan boats or paddle boats or any kind of boats allowed? I know it used to be, and you had boats in Branchbrook Park, I believe, Weeknight Park as well at some point.
As it stands now, we only have two sites, the reservoir, which again is county operated, and then Verona Park, which is a concession here. Occasionally, on rare occasions such as like the Cherry Blossom Festival, we might have some boats over in Branchbrook, but that's really more of a special occasion.
So if someone wanted, a private vendor wanted to own, like you said, own and operate, put a boat, have a boathouse in Branchbrook Park again, or in Weeknight Park, what is the process for doing so?
We would certainly welcome that. They're free to contact the Parks Department directly, and we could listen to what they envision, and certainly go from there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Commissioner Pumarres, Vice President.
That's all right. Is this fleet of swan boats a replacement, or simply just to expand the fleet because of demand?
It's a little bit of both. It is a replacement. The lifespan of a swan boat is three to five years, just depending on usage. The reservoir has like a Belgium block bottom. So lots of times when the boats are being docked, or patrons are using them, they tend to hit that Belgium block, especially along the sides. So the boats get scraped up and dinged. So this is partially a replacement, partially some new boats. What we typically do is when, if the boat is beyond repair, and we do repair them in-house, but if it gets to the point where we can't repair them anymore, we do scrap the boats and take whatever parts are usable to then use on future boats for replacements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Siebel, and a second from Commissioner Graham to take Resolutions Seven through Nine as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Vice President Pumarres?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions Ten through Thirteen, which are from the Department of Public Works. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Antonio is going to address Items Ten through Thirteen.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number Ten is a contract award to Halfman Equipment to provide the rental of three front-end loaders with three cubic yard buckets. This is the first one-year contract option available under an existing contract. These front-end loaders are utilized during winter operations at our three salt domes located in Verona, Belleville, and Melbourne. Item Number Eleven is professional service agreement to provide cultural resources for various county bridge projects. The award would be to Richard Group Associates in an amount not to exceed $38,285. The county is planning on replacing various culverts throughout the county. The replacement of those culverts will likely trigger the requirement to apply for a freshwater residence permit from the Department of Environmental Protection, thereby requiring compliance with rules that require us to consider effects of the project on historic and archaeological resources for bridges or structures that could be registered in the National Register of Historic Places. Item Number Twelve is a contract award to DCO Energy, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder to provide operations and maintenance of building systems at the Juvenile Detention Center from March 30th of 2021 through March 30th of 2024, an amount not to exceed $3,139,019.81. Item Number Thirteen is a contract award to DCO Energy, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder to provide operations and maintenance of building systems at the hospital center, the period of March 30th, 2021 to March 30th, 2024, for an amount not to exceed $7,073,108.51. Tonight, we have Mr. David Alvecchio from DCO, who would like to address the Board, introduce himself, the company, and perhaps answer questions. David?
Thank you very much. And, Mr. President, and the Board of Commissioners, thank you for having us here tonight. And also with me on the phone, I believe, is Fred Eckert, who is the Executive Vice President of Operations for DCO Energy, Ron Halli, who works with Fred, and John Wall of DCO Energy. I believe they're all on the phone. And the good news is that the, at the hospital center, we've actually been there since it opened, and we've been at the JDC for quite some time also. And the good news is that these years, the contract for the next three years is actually less than the contract for the three years before. So we're very familiar with everything there, obviously, since we've been there for, like I said, the hospital since it opened, and JDC for probably a similar amount of time. And, you know, we love being part, putting Essex County first. And any questions that the Commissioners or the consultants or the professionals have, please go ahead.
So, excuse me, before we do that, you brought some other folks with you. Do they have different perspectives? Are they, or they have different expertise than what you just gave us?
Well, Fred and Ron, for instance, if you had specific questions about the operation, they know the operation in and out, and would be able to answer any questions pertaining to that.
So let's do this. Let's get Fred or Ron to put their name on the record and tell us about the operation. How about we do it that way?
Sure.
Fred and Ron? Okay, good evening. This is Fred Eckert, DCO Energy Executive Vice President, Operations. I just want to tell you a little bit about the contract, and I want to thank you for your confidence in our company, our group, and your trust in us. As David said, we have been at the JD Center for 13 years, and the hospital since it was, it started up in 2006. The Juvenile Detention Center is five employees. The classification is one lead operator slash O&amp;M manager, four operator maintainers. It's a 24/7 operation. These employees are all members of Local 68. The employees have high-pressure black seals and refrigerant licenses as required by the State Boiler and Pressure Vessel Codes. The scope of these contracts, and I'll just go with the JDC first, and then we'll hit the hospital center in a minute. The scope of the contract is to provide labor, materials, consumables, all your contractor labor, such that we can maintain and operate the systems in accordance with all the OEM, which is the original equipment manufacturer's requirement. We also are operating equipment like the boilers, the chillers, the HVAC systems, emergency generators, fire systems, all the plumbing, the locks, and all the building services. Roofing is all included in this contract. We also comply with all the bonding and the insurance requirements as specified. So this does all your preventative maintenance, your corrective maintenance, and also provides all tooling. In the contract, the term is three years, so that's why you're seeing the number. Usually, we're somewhere around a million a year, so that's why you're seeing at the JD Center, the award around 3.1 million. And there's an optional two-year extension if the county chooses to select us again. In addition to that, there is a reimbursable discretionary amount that's in these bids, and that's completely approved by the county, and that's, for the JD Center, that is $100,000. So the psychiatric hospital, we have 11 employees, one lead operator manager, O&amp;M manager. We have four operators, one for shift. We have four maintainers, one for shift. So it's a 24/7 operation, similar to JD Center. We also provide a service technician and an HVAC technician. Again, all these operators and maintainers are members of Local 68. They all possess the high-pressure boiler and refrigerant license as required by the State Boiler and Pressure Vessel Code. The equipment is relatively the same. The big issue with the hospital specification is we are JCO certified, and we comply to all the joint commission requirements for maintenance. This contract has a reimbursable county discretionary amount of $300,000 per year, completely approved by the county. And again, we have been there since startup for 14 years. And the scope is the same, boilers, chillers, all the labor, all the materials, all the consumables, all the contract services. The bonding and insurance per spec, and the preventative maintenance and tooling is all in there. And any, any questions?
Hold on. Is Ron going to say something? Or did you cover everything?
I think I covered everything.
Okay, all right. Mr. Paulalvecchio, have any questions?
Mr. President, not a question, but a just comment on Items Twelve and Thirteen. Twelve, which deals with the Juvenile Detention Center, and Resolution Thirteen dealing with the hospital center, both of those contracts were put out by public bid. Both were awarded to who was determined to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and both of them are for multiple-year contracts, as you heard, both three-year contracts at the amount, the not-to-exceed amount given in the resolutions with the two-year options at the end of those three-year terms. So they are the lowest responsive and responsible bidders in both instances.
Thank you, Mr. Paulalvecchio. Mr. McInerney, any question?
Yes, I do. The discretionary amounts that you may mention too, especially the one for the hospital center, $300,000, is that, that's for the period of the contract, correct?
This is, this is Fred Eckert, and that is for every year. There's a $300,000 allowance for reimbursables every year. I need to stress, DCO Energy doesn't control that money. That's controlled by the county director and also Public Works Department. What they will do is direct us on what needs are, and then we go out and get bids, and then we basically submit those bids for that, for the amount of money. Once that fund is used up, we don't spend anymore, or they don't spend anymore. If there's anything left, I believe you have to talk to them. I believe they return it.
Was that the same amount as the last three, as the last contract?
Last, the last several contracts, the hospital was $200,000, and the Juvenile Detention Center, so it was $200,000, we had $300,000. The Juvenile Detention Center was $150,000, and they dropped that to $100,000.
I know the one also for corrections has one as well. I thought that was at $150 at one point in time.
The, we operate the Essex County Correctional Facility, and that is $800,000 over a, I believe it's a two-year, two-year period.
Okay, all right. And as you said before, these amounts are discretionary to the county. My recollection is that they're mostly used for parts or certain repairs or equipment is not included in the overall contract.
That's correct. There's a cap on the equipment, on our spending limit of $5,000. So it's used for items over $5,000, and it's also used for capital projects that they choose to spend it on.
What's the overall condition of the, you know, the, you know, the systems themselves? I know they've been in place for a period of time, but what is the, what's the overall condition? Do you see any needs for any major capital improvements to, you know, to these areas?
So let's speak to the JD Center. Since we've been there over 14 years, over the 14 years, Frank Biscucci and the Public Works Group has replaced a good amount of the air handling units. We've done some major work on the chillers and the boilers. So the mechanical systems are all in operating shape and all in acceptable condition. At the psychiatric hospital, we have what we call an N plus one environment, which means out of the three chillers, we'll only run two of them at any one given time. Sometimes we're only running one. Same with the emergency generators and the boilers and all the air handling units. So that equipment is still in very good condition. And we have, in occasion, upgraded software and upgraded some of the hot water, major hot water heaters and tanks. So your building service equipment in both them buildings is slowly getting upgraded, but overall, they're in very good condition at this point.
And as far as staffing, everybody who's in these facilities has their requisite, you know, licenses and certifications?
Correct. And if you go and you ever walk into the boiler rooms and the control rooms, you'll see that all the personnel have their New Jersey boiler licenses posted on the wall, whether they're a red seal, gold seal, or a black seal, and their refrigerant license, which is either blue or red. So all those personnel are licensed. Like I said, they're all Local 68. Ninety percent of the individuals have gone through the Complete Apprenticeship Program. There are some that got grandfathered in early. complete apprenticeship program. There are some that got grandfathered in early on, but there are more experienced guys.
All right. And my, well, I mean, was there something in that, in the original contracts, or I don't know if it's still, about a fireman?
We, we, we take care of the fire systems and we have an electrical, we have a licensed electrician on staff in the event that we have to replace a smokehead or some electrical component. However, I will tell you that nine times out of 10, the fire contractor is within earshot of one of the facilities because we, we're operating both the, the VOTEC School, the JD Center, the hospital, and the, and the correctional facility. And with, with all that work going on, we have our fire contractor there a good amount of the time doing corrective, and he has a significant preventive maintenance program.
Is that, is that above the?
But that's, that's the, that is the fire issue. We do have to have a licensed person if we change the smokeheads and stuff like that.
Right. Because I remember, I'm told about a while ago that there was, we're not licensed. At this point in time, you're using an outside contractor.
We, we, we have a licensed electrician on staff, and we're using a outside contractor in addition to that.
Okay.
So we have the capability in event of a severe emergency. However, if it's just a normal day and the contractor's available and the electrician is signed elsewhere or assigned in a, on a previous job, we will, we will call the contractor in.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you for that information. Commissioner, questions or comments?
Mr. President, I, I have, David Delvechio, DCO Energy, and the people with DCO who spoke tonight, have been working for the county for many, many years, and they've done a wonderful job. I can't remember how we're ever having a problem with them. So I'm very happy to support them and to have them continue doing the great work they do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sebo.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Luciano to take resolutions 10 through 13 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number 14, which is from the Office of Public Information. We will read it into the record at a later time. Please be reminded, we will conduct a public comment session for non-agenda items at the end of the meeting for any other call-ins. Clerk, can you give them the call-in information, please?
If you're calling in, the number is 855-756-7520. That is 855-756-7520. Use the password 72190. Again, the password is 72190. You will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. And that is the information, Mr. President, for a public comment later on, on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Jackson, please explain the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Deputy Administrator Coltrane is going to handle items 14 through 19.
Mr. Coltrane, we can't hear you. Still cannot hear you. Mr. Jackson, you may have to take over.
Sounds like it, Mr. President. Okay. We'll go through these. First one is a contract with Crown Trophy, lowest responsive, responsible bidder to provide for trophies and plaques and other commemorative items that we do throughout the year. The county is a 12-month contract in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Most of these are a 10% discount on list price. It includes a $25,000 allowance for engraving and engraving. This is a countywide contract. Number 15, number 15 is with the Department of Administration of Finance, Officer Purging. This is a contract with West Publishing Corporation to provide for West law research data, related library materials for SS County, all SS County agencies, primarily used by the county council's office, prosecutor's office, and the correctional facility, law research data, and related library materials. This is a non-open and non-fair and open contract, bid exempt, in an amount not to exceed $750,000, a two-year contract. Item 16 is a contract to award to four lowest and responsive and responsible bidders on an item, item-by-item basis to pervert, to furnish households and janitorial supplies through the 24-month agreements, amount not to exceed $2 million. Received seven bids, four vendors were chosen, United States Sales, USA Corporation, TSP Maintenance Supply, Imperial Bag and Paper, Interboro Packaging. And this, again, is a countywide contract. Item 17 is with the Office of the Sheriff.
Yes.
Let's, but let's do those three for now, and then we'll come back to the rest. Okay. Mr. Paul Alvechio, any questions on 14, 15, and 16?
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions on resolutions 14, 15, or 16? Now, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Vice President Pumares. Roll call, Madam.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions 17, 18, and 19. Correct, Mr. Jackson?
That is correct, Mr. President. Yes.
Okay.
Contract that number 17 is with the Office of the Sheriff. It's a contract to award to Frank's Truck Center, the sole responsive, the responsive bidder. This is going to provide one new 2021 Chevy Tahoe Sport utility vehicle in an amount not to exceed $62,317. Item 18, again, Office of the Sheriff, similar vehicle, 2021 Chevrolet Tahoe Sport utility vehicle, in an amount not to exceed $58,669. Item 19, that's with the Office of the Prosecutor, similar vehicle, 2021 Chevrolet Tahoe Sport utility, utility vehicle for the prosecutor's office, in the amount of $117,338.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
All those are with Frank's Truck, Truck Center from Lynnhurst, New Jersey.
Thank you. Commissioner, I'm, Commissioner, I was gonna say Commissioner Paul Alvechio. Mr. Paul Alvechio.
No questions on these, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions? 17, 18, and 19. Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Sebo. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions 20 through 31, which are governing body certification compliance with EEOC guidance in memoriam and accommodations. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Paul Alvechio.
Yes, Mr. President, I could speak to number 20. Number 20 is a resolution, as you stated, for governing bodies certification of compliance with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's enforcement guidance on the consideration of arrest and conviction records in employment decisions. This is part of the budget adoption process, and the board members are asked for their familiarity with certain enforcement guidance under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act. And I've provided, as I have in past years, a memo to the board and provided a summary of both the enforcement guidance and the relevant county hiring processes pertaining to an individual's criminal history. So you can become more familiar with those subjects. And of course, I've consulted with county council, and based on that, it's my opinion that the county's practices comply with this EEOC guidance. So you should feel comfortable, we're confident that you can certify as required by the budget process before, before the county submits its budget.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Alvechio. Mr. McInerney. You're muted, sir.
No, no questions. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Vice President Pumares to take resolutions number 20 through 31 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk. You're muted.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any added starters?
Uh, Mr. President, we, we have none.
All right. Commissioners, do we have any reports of board committees? Any legislative reports? Any written communications? Any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, here are none. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to the public comment session on non-agenda items. However, since we are meeting remote, the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration, and they also have the opportunity to call in. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, as is our practice and our policy, all questions are answered in writing. So at this time, our public information officer will announce the callers so they can state their comment or their question and be reminded, you will have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we're accepting only calls pertaining to non-agenda items. Charlo Malumba, our public information officer, will begin our session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Charlo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the SS County Board of Commissioners. We do not have any callers waiting to speak at this time.
Thank you. Mr. President, we do have a, a, several comments that we received by email. The first one was submitted by Karen T., no last name or address given. Hello, I'm an employee of SS County Welfare, and this is in regard to the decision that SS County Welfare employees should be returning to five-day work schedule at the office on March 1st. This decision should be reconsidered, or at the very least, an extended period of time should be issued, and here's why. The county of SS is not prepared to receive over 600 employees at their designated workstation. At this time, there's no proper distancing set for each employee and their cubicles, creating a bigger concern regarding COVID-19. Elevators and entrances need to be modified in a way. There's no morning traffic when getting in and out of the building. This has to be addressed by the county. Additionally, a lot of us are parents of minors attending elementary school, and at this time, school districts remain closed with no clear path of when or how children will return to school. When putting parents in the position of leaving children with others to care for while attending virtual classes brings a lot of other issues and financial hardships that we're not prepared to take on. Thirdly, some of us have received laptops and all are well capable to do work from home and maintain productivity as if working in the office. With new technology in our hands readily available to use, in a worldwide pandemic still active, the mandatory physical attendance to an unfit building should be a thing of the past. Please reconsider this decision or allow us all to have a clear extended time to prepare for five days a week at the SS County Building. Sincerely, Karen T. The next comment was submitted by Tina Spiccia, no address given. Hello, my name is Tina Spicsec, and I'm reaching out because the meetings of the SS County Commissioners consistently fail to meet the basic standards of democracy and accessibility. For the past several years, the county ICE contract has been the overwhelming top of issue of concern at these meetings. We've seen numerous attempts to avoid the public from ending the beginning, opening public comment session to forcing all comments to be read by the clerk for the first several months of the pandemic. Now, at recent meetings, speakers have been regularly dropped from the queue by your system, and at your recent meeting, at least one, possibly more people were in line waiting to speak and never called. This is completely unacceptable, as well as illegal, and yet another effort to avoid the growing movement against the ICE contract. I'm hailing you to demand that the public be allowed to speak on Zoom or call through a simple raising of hands, which is how Hudson County Commissioners' meetings operate. I also want it noted that I see the inaccessibility of these meetings as a symptom of a broader failure of democracy in SS County. The public does not want the county to contract with ICE and has made that clear for years. Instead of listening, you've made it harder for us to be heard, but we are not going anywhere. So please make these meetings more accessible and also call on Joe DeVizendo and the Commissioners to stop collaborating with ICE. Thank you. The next comment was submitted by Matt Dragon of West Orange, New Jersey. I appreciate the work that's being done by the administration and many county employees around vaccine distribution. From everything I've heard, we're one of the better counties in the state that deserves acknowledgement upfront. But one thing that was glaring to me, that despite 30% of the county population be, being white as of 2019 census estimate, 49% of the vaccination have census estimate, 49% of the vaccinations have gone to white residents, according to the state vaccination dashboard. Black residents make up 49% of the county population but have received only 12% of the vaccinations. Hispanics population are 23% of the county but have received 9% of the vaccination. Requesting an official response. What is the breakdown by municipality or even better zip code of the residents for those who have been vaccinated by the county? That data should be tracked per vaccination site. So if you can conclude a black breakdown by site to see if Newark residents really are traveling to West Caldwell, Livingston or West Orange to obtain vaccination as a plan anticipated that they would. Three, what is the county current breakdown by race demographics and by vaccination site? Four, what is the county's plan for increasing outreach directly to communities now that J&amp;J vaccine is available and Moderna announced a 30-day shortage in regular refrigeration? Five, has the county medical ambulance, buses or similar equipment been considered to bring refrigerated vaccinations directly to communities, even contracted private ice cream trucks? Six, who is being consulted on reaching these communities in ways other than 8:00 a.m. website appointment dumps? What work is being done with the municipalities and community groups? Seven, who is a county hiring even part-time or hourly to do outreach in their own communities? Both for education and for actual registration for appointments or identifying areas or neighborhoods that could benefit from a direct-to-curbside vaccine distribution event? Thank you. The final comment was submitted by Jeffrey Phil, Exquire of Short Hills, New Jersey. Okay, it starts as Exhibit A, Post, March 1, 2021. Renology of Events, Monday, March 1, 2021. Turn this for me, please. Attorney Phil submits Orange 3, March 2, 2021, CC Meeting Notes. Attorney Phil asked to speak with state and SS County attorneys regarding post February 22, 2021, long-term tax exemption developments. SS County Commissioner Attorney asked to be excluded from the Orange email trail. This net engineering solutions versus Icon General Construction LLC, A-3129-19. Appellate Division, March 1, 2021, Accuso and Verona reversing default judgment. The Star Ledger, James Florio op-ed, America's something is fundamentally wrong. States are being asked to solve too many national problems. The key to improving our government's responsiveness is our willingness to review what works and what doesn't. Whenever the issue, applying old increasingly ineffective or inequitable policies to new problems can only make matters worse and cause additional problems. It is time to review 1787 assumptions in light of the 21st century responsibilities. Our challenges, our challenge is to lay and explore present and present the policy options that are available along with recommendations in order to build a consensus. This task is not for the faint-hearted. Some upholders of status quo will fight to the death and usually for the money, think tobacco, coal, assault weapons. But the end goal, preserving our democracy is worth the struggle. New Brunswick notice of virtual public meetings. Members of the public will be able to submit public comments questions to the city clerk via electronic mail at by Monday at 4:00 p.m. prior to the Wednesday of the council meeting. City of Hackensack notice of virtual public meeting, the mayor and city council will be accepting email public comments in advance of the meeting for those individuals who are unable to participate electronically. The comments will be read into the record by the city clerk. While the Township Planning Board notice of virtual public meetings, members of the public will be able to give public comments during relevant portions of the meeting to email a public comment, please include your name, address, limit the email to 450 words and send it off by 3:00 p.m. the next day prior to the meeting. New York Times, William D. Cohen op-ed, the end of private equity. Judge Rakoff calls Jones Board reckless and said it could not take cover behind the business judgment rule, which usually protects directors from being held accountable for past business decisions so long as they were made in good faith. That is three minutes are up for the reading of this document. The rest of this document will be read into the record at a later time, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, that includes comments for public session.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And as is our practice, any questions that need to be answered will be responded to in writing, correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. We're now moving to Commissioner Comment Session. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Mr. President, I just have a brief mention.
Yeah, Mr. Vice President Pumares.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder that tomorrow, Essex County will have its weekly food distribution event. It'll be held tomorrow, Thursday, March 11th at 9:00 a.m. And will take place this week at the Life Christian Church, 747 Northfield Avenue in West Orange. We have about 1,000 boxes to give away. I know a lot of us make it a point to go there on a regular basis and we have a lot of staff and volunteers that go. And I would encourage people to share the information and try to help out a neighbor because we know that a lot of people are experiencing challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vice President. Any other Commissions, any comments or questions? I just have a comment and a question. Have everyone on this call downloaded the Essex County Commissioner app?
Yes, sir.
If you haven't, please do. Very easy to use, very responsive, get all kinds of alerts for meetings and those kinds of things. You can get it from Apple and you can get it from the Google Play Store. So get it and encourage your constituents to get it as well. And I want to thank Lionel and the team for putting this together. It's very important and very well done. Anything else?
I just want to say that Lionel and the staff did such a great job with the app that the mayor is inquiring about getting one for the township.
Very nice. Any other questions or comments? Hearing now. Commissioners, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Take care, everyone. Be safe.
Take care, everybody.
Good night.
Have a good weekend.